Welcome, welcome, welcome. We are calling to order our ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools Committee, the whole meeting. This is a meeting that we have once a month. Usually it's on a Tuesday, but Duluth has been famous for bad weather this winter. So here we are on Thursday, April 6th. Again, we are ISD 709, the Duluth Public Schools. This is our committee of the whole meeting. This is where both Assistant Superintendent Bonds and myself consistently say, these are the meetings where really a lot of information is shared, a lot of in-depth questions, a lot of back and forth. And it really is an incredible opportunity for our community to get a glimpse into all the things that are going on in our district, as well as our own glimpse into things too. So again, this is the committee of the whole meeting, and Members Zdolski will take role.
Okay, Member Edar.
Present.
Member Kirby is excused. Member LaForte?
Here.
Member Lofab?
Here.
Member Oswald?
Here.
I am here, Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus?
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich is excused. EHR Director Sevins, excused. And then Board Secretary Bicat?
It's really gonna be Shannon Brown.
Shannon Brown. We'll change that one.
Thank you. And again, this is a meeting too that's a little less formal. There isn't any formal voting going on. And we have presentations. And tonight, on our agenda, we have presentations from Head Start, presentations from our Setting Four update, and also from our School Board Handbook, Handout, and Science, Computer Science presentations. So I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Thank you, Chair Luffel, and hello everyone, and thank you for joining us. And I would just want to remind everyone, we are up against time, but we have some really thorough presentations. And so I will keep my intro brief and turn it over quickly to our Director of Head Start, Sherri Reeves, who is going to walk us through our Head Start programs.
All right. I'm gonna start. I'm gonna start with the self-assessment, which is the like last. The self-assessment is required for us to do annually in Head Start. The self-assessment, along with the community needs assessment, are the drivers, Head Start personnel. So when we do a self-assessment, we are looking at how different of our program is meeting the performance standards, and if the, any systems that we may improve upon to better meet the needs of children and families. So also are we achieving the goals that we intended. So this is the third year of our, we are approaching the third year in our goal cycle, in our grant cycle. So a reminder of what our goal areas, our grant goal areas are for this five-year grant cycle. One is high-quality inclusive classrooms. The other, walking the talk of equity and inclusion. A third, fostering resilience with a focus on health and wellness. And then in terms of just looking at our program, we looked at program management and quality improvement, and parent, family, and community engagement and transportation. So in our self-assessment, we split into those five groups to analyze our program and look at how we're doing. We always start with program strengths when we do a self-assessment. And one of our greatest strengths is that we're part of this school district. So that allows us the opportunity to work with other departments, collaborate closely with the early childhood special education department, American Indian Ed Department, and the Office of Educational Equity are all important people that we feel our departments collaborate well. It can be challenging to be a part of this district because we don't exactly fit perfectly, but we work hard to work together. So our management team devised a self-assessment plan with tasks and timeline, and talked about the five areas that we looked at. And what we do is look at the strengths and weaknesses of each one of these areas, try to identify data sets that will help us answer how we're doing. And we try to have those teams have a management team member, a teacher, a parent, in some cases, a community member with some expertise on the topic. If parents don't come, we can follow it with phone calls or surveys, and we can augment our teams' effectiveness. So I'm flipping ahead to the key things. If we just look at our progress on our goals, when we look at high-quality inclusive classrooms, program-wide PLCs were implemented along with the early childhood special ed department. We saw some grade improvement. So because we are one grade level, we identified some scores that were teacher's scores. So our teachers are evaluating using the class evaluation system, and trying to bump up an area in that. And our social-emotional tool that we use is Pyramid Increase School, like PBIS in the grades. And there is a measurement and fidelity tool that we were able to identify some calls from. And so we've always been setting a social-emotional goal based upon Pyramid, and an academic goal based upon the class. So we wanted to move our instructional support from a 64% to an 80% as measured by the class. And after one year of PLC, we were able to get it to 70%, we were able to increase it by 10%. I will say that I just completed my final pass of this year, and I already hit the goals. That PLC really does make a huge difference, and I have targeted goals to work towards this week. We wanted at least 80% of our teams to collect behavior incident reports, and to put those into the system that we use, the Pyramid model. And we did reach that goal that year, so.
Sherri, can I, I just, it slipped on me quick. Can you say, the goal was set at what? Did you say 84%?
64% we wanted to move it to 80. We moved it to 75.
And that's in what timeframe?
One school year.
Thank you.
We did a great job with our PLCs in the 21, 22 school year. And this year, they sort of fell off track. So we started the year with some corrective action and really realized that what we needed to do was strengthen our teams. And so that was a focus, our focus this year has been creating a culture of restorative practices because we know that our staff need to have courageous conversations to point out when things don't seem right, to talk about how great things are, when things are going well. And it's teams that are in the classrooms that really need to be able to talk to each other and have honest conversations. And that, that isn't easy to do. And so we've spent a lot of time working on how we do that, and how important it is to be able to do that. We are so aware that we serve most of all our kids. That almost makes me brag, but I don't have time for that.
Oh, we do.
But our kids deserve the best, there's no doubt. Moving forward, we have a renewed commitment to the PLC process. And we will link those goals to our program-wide goals, which will internally link to the Duluth Public School goals. So put that system in place to get it right next year. We'll talk more about it. Another thing about high-quality inclusive classrooms is we monitor the rate of growth for students on IEPs. We compare that to the rate of growth of students not on IEPs. And students on IEPs experience a greater growth in our classrooms. That was a 200% in some cases. I shared some of that data with you. And finally, within that goal, the behavior incident report data tracking is so incredible, it's giving us amazing information. It has an equity tool embedded inside of it. And what we realized looking at our data this year is that boys are more than twice as likely to have behavior incident reports by. And so we know we've got somewhere to go. Second grant goal, walking the talk of equity. Nature play, we put under PIS and also the Health and Wellness because nature-based preschools are the fastest-growing type of preschool in Duluth. And high tuition rates make them out of reach for families experiencing poverty. And so in our public school preschool, we are providing the service to all of us. Oshkay and Wayan, in the 21, 22 school year, American Indian students were our highest-performing demographic. I've shared that data through this package. In the current year, we've had staffing changes happen in Oshkay and Wayan that were concerning. Biggest question being, can we have this program if we don't have the other parent and teacher? After much stress, I called every single parent who had a child in Oshkay and Wayan, and they assured us that they'd be again. They really appreciate having a space where they can be together. And in our program, all of the students that are in that classroom are affiliated in some way with the tribe. So having a community of people with shared culturally is very important to our. The data that's shared is our data from last year by race. So right now, success of the program is based on student achievement, but the family testimonials that we've heard when we made those phone calls really was important to that for our program. We will be expanding Ojibwe words and phrases throughout our program this year. So we'll start a slow, gradual expansion of Ojibwe language across the program. And finally, our equity team is part of walking the talk of equity. It has merged with the Office of Educational Equity Advisory Committee and the Subcommittee, so we are now part of the IAD. We do continue to offer annual book studies for teachers on anti-racist ideals. This year, they are working, they're reviewing White Fragility. There are five or six participants. We've had the three books that they restarted with How to Be an Anti-Racist, last year, The New Jim Crow, this year, White Fragility. So teachers are signing up for those, and they're really great. He offered through the news and views. School readiness is always the grand goal in Head Start. And so our grand goal is that all students will be at 85% or higher for all four-year-olds across all funding streams. And you can see that our data from last year show us that we need that goal. We focus a lot on the first six weeks of school with teachers setting an optimal learning environment, which means we modify the environment to meet the needs of the students in front of you, or gradually increasing stamina or scaffolding for various reasons. But we take those first six weeks of school and we hold down carefully as we need to teach the children in front of you, not. I don't have such sense, but.
The students.
Teach the students in front of us, and not the students we wish we had.
What you had five years ago.
Exactly. Or it looks the way you like it, that you should, so. We also are committed to play-based learning. So we know that we need ample time for play, and supporting kids' ability to engage in play is paramount in a successful learning equation. Our final grand goal is fostering resilience with a focus on health and wellness. Nature play falls there too. So 100% of families believe it's important to spend time in nature, according to our own survey. We had a study with UMB that reveals that spending some time in nature increases students' executive function. The growth rates were so high, it's believed that time in nature may help to close achievement gaps. And so in this study, which is published, we are the middle bar, the blended nature. So our students experience more growth than students with higher socioeconomic status in more nature-based programming. Super exciting stuff. That's what we're taking to the National Head Start Association. Everybody needs to know that it's possible to do that, and it's good for kids. Also, there are fewer behavior incidents outside. So kids are more successful outside. So almost 80% of behavior incidents happen inside of the classroom. And really only 10% of behavior incidents have them in a play space. So natural play environments are places where kids can simply play and have very little behavior incidents on there. We have a partnership with the Y. We've been offering, our full-day classrooms take safety around water, which is the anti-drowning class. So 72 kids a year participate in that. It takes us two years to get through all of our classrooms. But the Y really finds it successful. Every time they do it, we learn more about how to make it better. We had some Head Start days at the Y in 21, 22, and several families attended. The numbers were low, but the impact was pretty high. We streamlined scholarship application for our families. And this year, the Y provided our program of family day classes for all Head Start families. And is offering free swimming lessons to our families and their siblings. So we have got some great, our partnership with the Y is strong, very powerful. Creating a culture of safety is part of our health and wellness. So we spend a lot of professional development time looking at how staff as individuals and as teams respond to challenging behaviors. And we have developed a monitoring system to make sure that we are seeing all elements of the active supervision in place in every classroom as a result. Health and wellness for staff. We know that our teachers have been feeling very equally loved. So they are requesting more time to team, plan, engage, and reflect in practice. And restorative practices have been focused on four staff training sessions. When we look at our program management and quality improvement, ongoing monitoring became something that we knew we needed to do more of. So we've been visiting classrooms and looking for certain, seeing if certain things are in place. So we're targeting some, checking to see, is this in place? When we talk about it, but are we seeing it in place? And so that has been a new layer of managing our program. And then every year, I labor on the self-assessment process and tweak it to try to make it better and better. So that is also a subject that this continues to hurt. And finally, our last area is family engagement enrollment and transportation. We have been under enrollment this year for several reasons. One is half-day sessions. Families are asking for full-day sessions. And so at two of our sites, the half-day classes are at half capacity. So that's significant to note. Teachers are also asking for no additional students to be added when they have very challenging behaviors in the classroom. And that is hard to not do, so we actually rethought of that. And then there are larger systemic issues that impact our enrollment, and that is a lack of transportation for three-year-olds, and a lack of transportation and bin day for those half-day classes, and a lack of referral childcare. Those are systemic problems that we're facing. Family engagement, we have a lot of schools not allowing preschool parents to escort children into schools. They've developed drop-off systems that happen outside. So we're just sticking with that for safety and traffic movement in the parking lot. And that loses some connecting points for our family advocates whose job is to connect the families. And so they're working on ways to better engage and better document our connections and the impacts that we do have on families. And in transportation, we did have this incident happen. So we're working with the Transportation Department to make sure the systems are in place on every level. So our recommendations based upon our self-assessment are the following five. That we will use ongoing monitoring tools to track safety and compliance, that we'll train PLCs, plus teacher leaders to guide our PLCs, that we'll continue to introduce our data capacity in all areas, including the parent, family, community engagement through the self-assessment process, that we will seek to convert to half-day classrooms to full-day classrooms and to explore potential referral childcare. And that we'll continue our commitment to restorative practices to keep our teams strong and able to have these courageous conversations that help us keep our classrooms healthy.
Are there any questions? Oh, yeah.
I would just comment that, you know, I'm the liaison to the Head Start Governing Board of Parents. And I so monthly hear what parents have to say about the program, as well as the discussions. And it's an impressive group of parents that question and give feedback and speak so, so highly of what they, as well as their kids, are benefiting and their families are benefiting from participating. So thank you for letting me participate, yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, really glad to hear the, just the reflection and I guess the data that you've collected on the half-day sessions. I know a lot of people who are facing, you know, economic and transportation barriers. And that's the biggest barrier for them is that not having that bus ride, not being able to, you know, they can't get in for a full day. So that's great to hear. I would be really interested in maybe, this is a conversation for another day, but to know more about that equity tool that you built into the behavior data tracking. That, I mean, you had great impact from that. It seems like it would be something that we should share.
It's built in itself. I'd love to take credit for that, which is part of the system.
Okay, got it.
It's a big tool, so. So you'll see it gradually when it starts to get disproportionate. Slowly, the data will start to change colors. So it's very camcassant when there's something that needs to be corrected.
Good, one more question here, and then do you have more that you want to present? I'm just trying to be tried time.
Yes, I do.
So if we can keep that in mind, so that Director Reeves can continue with the presentation, then if you take some more questions ahead.
As far as the presentation and knowing the complexities of Head Start, I just wanted to say thank you for all your great leadership in the area. But we'll hear more about your great leadership in the next minute.
I'll go down to the top of the screen. So I'm asking for some grants to be approved. This is grant time at Head Start. State Head Start application. I think, let's see. I'm gonna just go on my heart and hope for it, just. Okay.
Could you repeat the name of the grant again?
The fiscal year 24, State Head Start Application, State Grant One, here. So our state grant funds our Families in Transition Program, which works with families who have experienced homelessness in the last year or are currently homeless. They work with 12 early Head Start people, so from pregnant mothers to age three, and five Head Start aged children. And our home-based program. Our home-based program, this year, we are going to explore some early Head Starts. So we will go from serving all Head Start aged children to serving some early Head Start children who are two. So the total of the state grant is $400,000. And you can see that it funds these teachers and pays for some supplies and other little items listed on the bottom. But I'm asking you to approve this state Head Start grant. And we're in the transportation makeup.
That doesn't beat a motion. Are we gonna approve?
No.
No, that's right, it's committing a vote, so.
Committing a vote.
Yeah, we don't vote.
Yep.
So the transportation waiver for Duluth Head Start, we changed it up a little bit for a couple of, we've added a couple of safety things to it. So voluntary pre-k is required to provide transportation to and from school for four-year-olds. And due to that, we have asked for Head Start children to be able to ride the bus as well. Transportation can be a huge barrier for access of families for people experiencing poverty. So there are two Head Start regulations that need to be waived in order for our kids to ride the bus. One is for restraints, and the other is for monitors on the bus. Every year, I ask for two ways to avoid those. Our Parent Policy Council supports this plan with the following safety precautions. And here's where there's a slight change. Preschool children, we're reflective vests, making them highly visible to the bus drivers and other staff, both true and from schools. So it was just making sure you could see your child. It's very important. Preschool children must sit on the seats closest to the bus driver. An adult must meet the children at the bus door at drop-off, and must bring the child to the bus door at pickup. And we encourage parents to establish communication with the driver. If the adult is not the child's parent, it must be someone who the parent designates that may take the child home from the bus stop. All Head Start children must participate in a bus safety presentation on the first day of school. Riding the bus is voluntary, so parents may choose to self-transport if they prefer. And in order to utilize school district busing, parents will sign an authorization form that releases students from the Head Start program to the transportation program of ISD 709. That's newly added.
That's the newly added piece?
That is newly added.
Do you reflect the vests as well?
What are that?
Is the reflected vests?
Reflected vests? I see them at Piedmont.
We started, I think we started doing it. This might be the first official.
Yeah, because they line them up at Piedmont, and they'll have their little reflective vests on.
Yes, yes. And at first, we thought, well, they only need to run home. Because when they're coming to school, there's always going to be an adult there between them. But the bus drivers actually really wanted us to have it go both ways. And so we responded to the bus drivers. They really wanted to see it go both ways, and there's no reason not to.
They see them every morning in their little vests, walking in.
It helps everybody, really.
Yeah, it does.
When you get a crowded school.
The scene of people.
It's a preschool.
It's arts, and then they march through. It's really cute.
So.
The release, is this something that we work with Transportation on and our insurer on?
I think we'll just put it in our home visit package. Just alerting families that you are leaving the Head Start supervision and you're entering school district busing. So it's not like it's, you know, it's a K-5, it's a pre-k. Just to really make it clear to them that this is school district busing, not a certain Head Start busing. So I think it's a good extra layer of awareness.
So is it the bus driver at the bus stop that's, when he dropping off the child, that makes sure the child is going home with the designated person? And I mean, it just seems like a hectic, awkward time where the problem could occur.
Right.
When the bus comes to stop, kids are anxious to get out.
Right.
And maybe I even have a father there who's not permitted to take that child away, or some other guardian vest.
Right, right, right. Right now, what we're depending on is that the person is at the stop at the correct time, and the child is getting onto a recognized adult, and that a relationship is being established between the bus driver and the parent. And so that's sort of what we depended on, the system. We know that the bus drivers can access emergency contact information. All of our kids are in the way of this. So if that person were a different person, seeing an emergency drop-off, they could access that, I mean, it was to see, oh, this is a person that's okay.
So at our schools, we have a system where, you know, this parent is not allowed to come into school and pick up that child. If that occurs in Head Start, would the same thing apply so that that bus driver would know that?
Right. Like in order for protection or something, like those lines, yes. It doesn't apply. Right, so all of our kids are also in the campus. So that's different. And that actually hasn't always been the case. But they are all in the campus, so all their safety flags. Also, the bus drivers have two documents. They have their route, and then they have a driver's folder. And the driver's folder is for all students, and they have special. You know, they may have an allergy, but a bus driver needs to be there. All early childhood children are in that folder. So they're kind of considered special populations, so. So we're trying to put some safety things in place, realizing that it's tricky. And it's a bus that's on a route that's got a lot of gifts to drop. That is the conundrum.
Well, yeah, I can see a confrontational situation. And where, I mean, where the young child would recognize that. Well, yeah, I can see, con- confrontational situation, you know, where, I mean, where the young child would recognize that adult person. But then that child shouldn't be leaving the bus with that adult person, you know. So if their flag is at the last student to get off the bus, at that stop, you know, and so, and it, it just seems like a very potentially hectic and problematic situation. That, that, and I guess all of the issues can be, really looked at without, uh, start or finish.
Right, right?
On that note, I'm, I'm assuming there's some sort of protocol, probably with the transportation company, if someone's not there.
Right.
You know, there has to be.
And that's more than the problem.
Yep.
You know, those scenarios have a knock-on, but that's, you know, has happened. And so they're returned back to school, so. And we're collecting data on that. So anytime a child is returned, we want to be alerted about that so that we can say this is a, is worth. So we're starting a data collection on that, right?
Is this what other districts do to transport their early childhood? Or is Duluth unique in, in the, the need that we have to, um, enroll our preschool? It's, it's better to get our kids in school early, we know that, so transportation like this not happening in too many districts?
Yeah, it's the Head Start performance standards that are so, so stringent about transportation and they do really hard. I did check with other Head Starts who utilize, you know, there are other Head Starts where the district does not grant me. Where the Head Start's located in the school and they use school district funds, you know, they use school district transportation. And, um, some of them have the kids sign out of Head Start. And sign, you know, this called it unsupervised log, which didn't sound like, uh, it didn't sound right to me. But this signature on the bottom here, I'm hoping will just be an alert to families that they're not in Head Start classroom anymore, so.
And how long have we been transporting our students, like, I know that every year we've been voting on this transportation waiver.
I think twenty seventeen was the year that voluntary pre-K came, yes, when the voluntary pre-K came. Uh, 'cause long ago Head Start had its own Head Start busing and it became pass prohibitive. And then there was a period of time where there was no transportation provided for Head Start. And then in twenty seventeen, when voluntary pre-K came and required transportation, then we could hot water the bus, um, our four-year-olds with it. And so that has only been happening since twenty seventeen. And there have been some issues, there's no law. And so.
And I, and I do want to, and I didn't think, uh, Director, um, we need to explore this or, because I know she and her team are working on it. To put in some safety precautions and measures to ensure students don't find themselves in any kind of situation. You also have to think about, we have our five-year-olds on the bus as well. We're a school district, things happen unfortunately and we try our best to make sure that we minimize those things, even with our youngest learners. So, uh, I want to thank you for these recommendations on trying to increase safety and, um, transporting your kids. Do you have any other documents that you want to go through?
I do. I'll just keep going. Um, I think I have my documents in my hand. Okay, I'm just going to mention, uh, Head Start enrollment reduction. So we are requesting to convert two half-day classes to full-day classes for the following reasons. They've been severely under-enrolled. When these same classrooms had higher enrollment, there was also a higher volatility in members. So people would sign up and drop and sign up and drop and sign up and drop. So we know based upon those two things. And that when families rank their choices for classrooms, half-day classrooms are typically not first choice. And the opportunity for transportation comes with full-day classes. So for those reasons, we would like to convert two half-day classrooms. Uh, one at Myers-Williams and one at Lawrence-Arthur, two full-day classes. That conversion results in a reduction of Head Start students. So it reduces, uh, it has us going from two twenty twenty-four Head Start students to one hundred ninety, so it's thirty-four slots we need reducing. Um, we have to show that those thirty-four slots could be picked up somewhere else in the community. And I think our community needs assessment to be able to demonstrate that. What happens with an enrollment reduction is you end up getting more money per child, right? Because our costs will be the same, we'll still have full-time teachers, you know. We'll see, they'll be minimum cost reductions, but nothing significant. Um, so currently we receive twelve thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars per child enrolled in Head Start. And with the reduction, it will increase to fourteen thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars per child in Head Start. It sounds like a lot, but when you compare the cost per child to all the Head Start programs in Minnesota, the range is from nine thousand, nine or ten thousand, all the way up to twenty-eight thousand. So we're right in the middle of the path with, with that number. That increased cost per child also will result in an increase, um, State Head Start dollars. Because all of those grants are based on your rate per child. So, um, there is a financial gain, but that is certainly not what we are looking for. We're really looking just to make kids and families better. So, no reduction.
Do we, will we maintain then any half-time classrooms?
Yes, there still will be three.
Okay, okay.
And those are, have got funding moments, so it's, we're really targeting those ones that really pay, not have their own.
Okay.
And where are those sites?
Myers-Williams and Lawrence-Arthur. So those, they will have just full days in those two sites.
Where, where are the half-day sites?
Um, where are the additional ones?
Where, where the, retaining that three half-day sites, where?
Piedmont and Lester Card. And Roll.
And by going to full-time, um, classrooms at Myers and Laurel, are there, um, classroom needs for that? Or do, does it just get absorbed, that half-day classroom that was used for half-day is the same classroom?
Yeah.
That will be used so that you don't need another space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Director Reeves and I talked about this in terms of.
I'm sure you've had, yeah.
Just trying to make sure it really, um, that we really assess this well, um, if this is adopted as a practice for next year. Uh, so we can assess if they had any impact on either further decreasing enrollment or if they have an impact on either increasing or maintaining enrollment. It is really important that we, you know, provide this level of services for our youngest learners, especially for marginalized communities. And that, that's one that you and I had a lot of conversation around. I don't want to create a situation where they're further, um, causing this opportunity to be missed by, again, some of our students. Students, especially our marginalized communities, so.
Right.
If implemented, we're going to really assess and see if it improves enrollment or, um, makes it bigger.
I would just add, I heard at the parent meeting, the parent voices who represent each of these different sites really spoke highly for that need for full day.
All right. So we'll move on to the Head Start quality improvement supplemental limitations. So cost of living adjustment, uh, is large this year. We weren't expecting, uh, this large of a, of a COLA. That's a hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. And we'll use it to cover the seven percent fringe benefit increase next year and a salary increase of two point five percent. And the remaining funds will be used to offset increased operating costs and budget, other budget areas. Uh, it cannot be used for staff, so that is kind of. Uh, the quality improvement, uh, is, uh, offered, it's been offered annually now, uh, for a while, which is just monies to help us improve the quality of our program. And it can be used for personnel, and that is exactly what we've been using it for. Um, so we have a very hard time getting substitute teachers in preschool. And so, uh, we are looking at hiring two point four floating substitute teachers to help us cover absences. And when, uh, you know, absence is needed to, uh, help to reduce the child mission classes and child behavior.
Can I go back up to the cost of living adjustment? When it says that the, it will be used to cover the seven percent fringe and then an increase of two point five salary, but yet you said it can't be used for staff?
I couldn't hire, that is enough money where I could say, well, I'd like to hire an official person with that money. So I can't, I can only increase the salaries of existing personnel and not hire new staff.
Okay, but with the second one, the quality improvement, you can?
I can, so.
Are, are, are Head Start teachers a part of ours ISD seven oh nine district teachers?
They are, congratulations to the public schools for having a substitute teacher, less than a teacher for.
Do you have a sub there?
I have not subbed there. I, I can certainly, I feel like I'm subbing there every day when I have my grandchildren, but, you know.
Just a quick question on the quality improvement. Uh, you mentioned two point four floating subs and a half-time social worker.
The half-time social worker is in the year, so ignore that second page and not sure when that happened.
I was gonna say, that doesn't seem like, like you're getting some pretty good deals.
I, I.
I want to know where you're getting those social workers.
I realize there's social workers already built everywhere based on, so.
Good.
I go back to the drawing board, sorry, apologize for that today. That's a really great, sixty-three grand. Yep, very, very expensive. Um, the last document is our federal Head Start continuation grant. So you can see the total amount, we're asking for a reduction. Uh, this is year three of a five-year grant cycle. We've already talked about what those grant goals are and their sub-assessment. But I wanted to point out the differences that we're asking for this year. So we're asking for this conversion from, uh, half-days to full-days at two sites, use our rationale as there. We are also asking to go to a four-day. So, right now, our Head Start, our full-day Head Start classrooms are in session two Fridays a month. And we are asking to go down to zero Fridays a month. And here are some of the reasons why. Teachers report feeling overwhelmed. They are in self-contained classrooms, they don't have access to specialists. Young children need a bill in a different way than older children do. There's no downtime. So there's no checking your email, it doesn't go the whole time they are in session. And they are feeling overwhelmed. And our classrooms are in session every other Friday because it needs a teacher's contract need for prep time. And we're still, are getting lots of feedback that it isn't enough. So there are benefits to the teachers and the staff, and here are some of the benefits. Time to team with early childhood special ed staff and other early childhood staff. Time to engage in PLCs and engage in reflective practice. And I should point out that reflective practice to an early childhood teacher is different than what you think of when you think of reflective practice. It's a very common mental health practice where sometimes there is some compassion to take because you get to know details about families that can be very difficult to, um, that can require some processing. And so reflective practice in early childhood is a mental health practice that teachers are offered to help them work through some of the, the trauma that they are aware of. And it's a common practice. It would allow teachers to engage in effective practice-based coaching. So now we've got practice-based coaches, but no time to really meet with the teachers to discuss results of the coaching. To, to really talk with your coaches, that's an important part of coaching. To participate in individualized processional development. To allow time for one-to-one staff check-ins that don't interfere with planning time. We're so paranoid about planning time that it's hard for us to meet with our teachers. They are really sticking to, this is my planning time, this is my prep time, and this is my time. So, uh, it is, it's very difficult, it's hard to be healthy. And it really does support wellness in a human authentic way. And this is, there are other four-day week Head Start programs, this is not an unusual thing. So, uh, Head Start is not, preschool is not A twelve, it is, it is its own thing, it has its own needs. There are actually benefits for families. We are talking about having some family engagement activities on one of the Fridays. So when families want to come to family, I mean, they want to see the teacher. I know they, that's who they want to be around is the teacher. And the teacher never goes to these things because they're in the evening, they're not, you know, they're, they're burned out, really. Having this consistent schedule of no school on Fridays clears up any idea of like, is there school this Friday? Is there not school this Friday? If, there's not, there's not. Children also thrive with those very consistent routines. And many daycares charge for full days whether you go there or not. So if you're going every other day, there may be people who are charged for the days that they're not going to daycare. Whereas if you just start out, you know, Fridays is a day that we need some, that I need to find a way to fill in, could be consistent. And then finally, individual communication with families surrounding child goals, the time you call the family to just connect with the family. If it doesn't happen, you're crunching for planning time or prep time, so. So those are the reasons. And now, I want you to know that ultimately the House of Head Start makes the decision. So, uh, we can put this in the goal and they can come back and say, no, that, that is not in the best interest of families and we don't support it. So ultimately, they are not going to let us do something that they think is not good for families. But I want you to know that we currently serve our students nine hundred fifty-five point five hours per year. Moving to a four-day week would reduce our dosage to eight hundred sixty-one hours per year. But Minnesota's minimum number of hours for kindergarten is eight hundred fifty. So we're still well within what the state of Minnesota Department of Education has said is an appropriate year year, uh, school year for young children. So we've considered this carefully. Our policy council wholeheartedly supports it. Um, they, they believe in taking care of the teachers, they know how stressful it is to be around little kids. So, um, so that is our proposal.
And when does this go, when does this grant go to the Head Start?
It's submitted May first.
Okay.
And we often don't hear back until, uh, July for the.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
That's hard.
Yeah, so it's, it's a, so looking at a week.
Remember.
Um, being that we just had to add two minutes per class at the secondary level because we were too close to, or we were below the minimum number of hours. And you're citing the kindergarten minimum number of hours, is preschool held to that standard of kindergarten hours? Or is there, is there no minimum there? So I'm concerned about, of, you know, any amount of buffer you may have for snow days. And, and has that been discussed at the parent home?
There hasn't, uh, there is no minimum number of hours for Head Start, um, but I do think we will be looking at ways to accommodate snow days. I think we all know.
And that's why when, earlier when I spoke about, uh, concerns about enrollment, I knew this was also part of the thinking. Um, because it is a change, you know, because I know that there are families, uh, Director Reeves, I spoke about this, I know there are families who do need a opportunity for their, you know, students. So I, I also want to make sure that we are active in something that's going to really deny those families the opportunity in this regard. So, um, I know it's, it's made it as something that Head Start will have to review and ought to be making a decision on. Even with that, as addition, we also have the ability to assess. And if we think, um, this is something that in practice we don't want to continue next year or a future, we can always come back and say, we want to revert back to a different one.
Yep, that's a good answer.
Any other questions?
I, I would just like to say that if the change is made, that when we're thinking about the strong outcomes that you're receiving with the, you're achieving, this does reduce the number of service by ten percent of all children. And I would be, I would want to make sure that the high levels of achievement remain if we were to do this practice in place. And it was like, strongly recommend that we add that back because I do, because, um, reducing, reducing service by ten percent to the kids, it is something a little bit, I think we should, we would very criticize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the Head Start presentation. So, I'll go back to, um, Assistant Superintendent Bonds for our next COW agenda item, which is.
Thank you.
The steps.
Could you give me a, a point of order? I would like to table an item, is there, do I request for an item? Give me a a point of order, I would like to table an item, is there, do I request for an item to be tabled, or how do I?
We can just do that, um, we've done that before, either taken something off or put something on because the COW meeting is is kind of flexible and less formal.
Right.
No, no uh, no, no votes need to be taken, no motion needs to be made.
I want to thank Assistant Director Thursday for joining us, but we're going to table, we're going to table the step three, uh, the steps presentation for next month, and we move to our next presenters, their presentation. And I have Cindy Miller, who is here, media specialist, as well as the director of national, or the directors of National Center for Computer Science Education. Jennifer is here as well, um, and there you will lead us in our presentation.
Thank, thank you, and I understand you have a closed meeting coming up, so we'll be as brief as we can. Um, I wanted to start off, I'm Jen Rosado, the director of the National Center for CS Education at the College of States of Alaska. Um, and give up just a little bit of context around computer science education. So nationally, over half of the high schools um in the U.S. offer a computer science class, but in Minnesota, only one in five schools offers a computer science class. We are last in the nation for computer science. There are state-level efforts going on, the Department of Ed is integrating computer science in the new subject area standards as they roll out. There's also been a bill in the House and in the Senate, and the governor has included computer science education in his budget proposal. So things are changing at the state level to um to improve it. And why computer science is important? We know from emerging research that computer science can support student learning beyond computing, so it helps improve math, reasoning, creativity abilities in students. Um, there's even one study from Broward County Public Schools that shows that students who had computer science in their elementary classrooms had increased uh test scores on math reading and science, alright, so there's evidence behind it. It's also about access to well-paying pay, excuse me, well-paying careers. Um, without early exposure to computer science, students are far less likely to pick a posay career, and that means that they are missing out on over eight thousand open, unfilled computing jobs in Minnesota that pay an average of ninety thousand dollars. That's something our kids should have access to. So for many of those reasons, we believe that computer science is important for our students to learn. And if you take a look at the handout, you can see that Duluth teachers have been engaging and doing um this work. They started with some professional development in December twenty twenty-one with Computer Science Ed Week. Um, and then they brought it to their students in May last year with the Spring and Decoding Event. And then this year, they've been doing a whole bunch of activities um with students across K through nine and grade bands. And the district has committed to doing some awesome things as well. The coding clubs at the elementary school, new high school class next year for computer science. Um, and has also committed to an NSF grant that we're hopeful we'll get funding for. So it would bring together a number of school districts in Minnesota to work on those efforts. Um, so just very excited about Duluth Public Schools, actually being a leader for Minnesota in computer science education. And I turn it over to Paul and Cindy to talk more about what's been happening this year and how that particular effort is going in part because we all funded that effort, alright, so.
Uh, yeah, thank you for having us here, I'm Paul Schoenfeld, and I am the district center coordinator with the Center for Computer Science Education. And I had the wonderful opportunity of working with about forty-one teachers from Duluth Public Schools. Um, and I want to share with you what we did, why we did it, and um how we tried to reach all students in the district. So we worked with forty-one teachers in the subject areas of math, we worked with middle school math teachers, we worked with high school science teachers, we worked with um library media specialists in the elementary school, working with kindergarteners, first graders and second graders, and we worked with, remember math, remember?
And arts?
And arts, and arts, K twelve arts. Um, so we invited these forty-one teachers to come to the College of States of Alaska in November, and they came and they did two nights of professional development, um, and they had a overall a good experience. The handouts that you have summarized some of their feedback that they gave us recently. Um, and they, they informally said that they enjoyed being able to come and have dinner and then for the next couple of months try out some computer science lessons in their classrooms. And we, so what we did was we took an integrated approach to embedding computer science within existing subject areas, in part because of some of the fatigue that we just heard about, trying to do an add-on. This was integrating computer science within the existing subject areas in a way that is in line with the standards that are coming out from the Minnesota Department of Education that embed computer science within the subject areas. So uh we had everybody come, try out the lessons, and they all implemented computer science in two or three hours um of lessons within their classes in all those subject areas, and had a good experience. Um, a couple of the outcomes are highlighted both in the students' experiences on the right-hand side of this um handout. The second quote, and this is some of the why we're doing this, um, a student highlighted that this gave me an opportunity to work on code, which is something I hope to do as a profession. And yeah, we're going to give you a chance to try out one of these coding activities here in just a moment. Um, but another why of why we're doing this is that students got to do problem-solving and creative thinking. And so teachers highlighted in the bottom right-hand corner that they saw students enjoying this Code and Go mouse activity that you're about to do. Because if something didn't go right, they could try again. And also noted that the students were very engaged in the problem-solving aspects of the lesson and saw their students persevering and solving the problems. And uh they think that the students who enjoyed the lessons the most were the ones who enjoyed the ability to experiment. How did we try to reach all students? We were very strategic about working with all the middle school math teachers so that we reached all the students in the middle school in their math class, give them exposure to computer science. Similarly, with uh elementary library media, we reached all of the kindergarten first and second graders, giving them that early exposure to computer science. And all of the high school science teachers, targeting specifically length级 physical science and some biology teachers, as well as the span from K to twelve with the art teachers. So we reached all students, and we highlighted professional development that included it included a universal design for learning framework to support students with disabilities and long learners, as well as um things with culturally relevant curriculum and pedagogies for for teachers to try in their classes. So I want to turn it over to Cindy, who can highlight uh what the kindergarteners do, and give your chance to try out the results.
This is an activity that we did with kindergarten first and second grade, this is Kobe, he is a Code and Go mouse. And so with your partner, you need to put your paper together so that it makes a grid, um, and this is what she'll do.
Are you my partner?
Yes, yes, she's.
Okay.
Um, and so uh look this way. This Kobe, Kobe will, using computational thinking, um, you need to tell Kobe what to do to get from the beginning spot to the cheese. The goal is to get to the cheese. And so what she'll do first is of course turn on Kobe, and then you will program Kobe to do the steps that he needs to do um to get to cheese. And so watch, just like this. The green button is go, don't push that yet, the yellow is to clear it, so go ahead and push the yellow button, and then you'll see on your grid, I mean, the other one's. You'll see on your grid that you're the first, Kobe has to go forward one box, then forward another box, then turn to Kobe's left, and then go forward again. And so you have to, um, you have to code it, so it goes like this, forward, forward, turn left, that's the orange.
Don't give him the answer.
And then you have to figure out how to get to the cheese. And then to make it run, and you may, it might not go the way you think it will, but you'll just try again. If that happens, try again. Um, go ahead and push the green button and see if your Kobe goes where Kobe's supposed to go.
You know what I'm asking you? He's going to turn, he's not going to want to do. So that's far.
Two left.
Yeah. Yep, that we want it twice. Not the gold one, I want to do it.
And then you'll see to turn the way you want it, or how would you change it?
And then, when he wants to turn, it goes there, and he turns left. Try to blue one, blue one, and then now Kobe is playing. So to clear over.
Remember that Kobe will only do what you tell it to do.
Okay, I'm going to try to, we're going to clear.
We do the three actions, or program or the other.
Yes, action, action, action.
So I just want to turn, if I could turn.
Um, so push the yellow to reset it.
You can have no whole circle.
Okay, and then you're going to program it, so it'll go forward.
We are.
Forward.
Success.
Winner. Oh, sure.
Sure.
I wanted to go back.
It's easy to do this.
You're making fun of the disabled person.
It's going to be tough if these are tied alike.
I actually was going to have the this way, this way. Like having ninety in my ninety or.
Yep, yep. And then they say.
I don't like people.
I know that, but this is why this is good.
Okay, you try something.
Oh, no, no, this was, this was through. So it's awesome.
I know, I thought when you were going to go backwards.
I know. So once you've gotten it to work, um, would you uh turn your mouse off, please, and pass it to the right?
Dylan, I wanted it to go hyper, okay?
Pass your mouse to the right.
Now we're going to give that to you.
So I want to wrap this up because I know you have another meeting.
It's the best school board meeting ever.
Our media specialists, elementary media specialists, there's five of us, were able to um uh do this activity with our students because of the help with um computer science curriculum and um and the work that we've done with them. And uh moving forward, if we do this in kindergarten first and second grade, then what is it that we do next? Like, and um, and those things need to be developed. Uh, we're in the learning process as our, as librarian, as librarians, moving toward um the future of what librarians are and what we do and how we do it. Um, this kind of thing is, uh, these are our new tools for research and development of um young people's minds. And so um I see the media specialist working with, and I'm, I'm on my own soapbox now. Working in, at the elementary level, but also at the middle school level and at the secondary level to implement computer science activities and be leaders in our district as um these things uh come around in our school district. And it's about time, yeah.
I just, I'm in the west end of town because I'm at Lincoln Park, and it definitely levels the playing field. And I had kids, especially last year and this year, that were completely disengaged with class, had done nothing all year. And we did the computer science, and they turned in amazing work. They, of course, asked, what's at high school, because I teach grade on, and the fact, I mean, it's twenty twenty-three, we need computer science in our schools. So, I mean, the kids are interested, they're eager, you know, they loved it, and now they want it in school, so.
And is that what we've, we've offered an elective in the high school?
We have elective next year.
In, in the high school?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Nine, open for nine through twelve?
Right now for eleven and twelve, but we're trying to change that so that it could be nine through twelve, so.
Is there a reason why it went eleven, twelve? I would think it would go nine, ten if you're doing it.
What math level they needed, is that?
Oh, okay, okay.
There was some kind of misconception that they needed algebra two, but they don't. And so it, and there are plenty of, it's an advanced placement computer science principles class. College Board places no restrictions except for algebra one being recommended to take for that class. So it could be nine through twelve students, we need it.
And typically, then, what license does the teacher that teaches this class have?
In Minnesota, um, you are authorized if you have a math or a business license. However, you can, of course, do.
At a variance.
Yep, on a variance. Part of the bill that's in the omnibus ed bill is to establish um a computer science licensure for the state of Minnesota so that we can solve this problem, and it doesn't have to be math and does business and be, and be teaching, so.
And Cindy, and if you can clarify for me, I believe not this camp, but the um, the coding after school camp, that's the one that we funded by using our S R dollars, and so these S R dollars, all those classes are.
They're currently. You also, yeah, you also funded this through S R dollars.
I was going to say. Not I funded, I mean.
It was a combination of S R dollars from last year, I believe, but yep, as well as funding from the CS for all and salary cap project.
I just want to say thank you um for the, for the great presentation. I also got to see the mouse in action and um the coding day that we had, which was a lot of fun for our elementary kids so they were getting a taste of it too, just want to say thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And can you introduce yourselves again? I, I missed that. Not, I know Cindy and I know Jane, it's, are, are you from College of Alaska?
And yep, I'm working with the, at Scholastica with the same organization as Jeb, former high school teacher in Duluth.
Okay.
Oh, just sent us an email to me, it's.
Did I?
Maybe, maybe it's, alright, I'm good.
And I'm, I'm Jen Rosado, yep, I'm at Scholastica, we have a center for CS education there.
I wore my shirt Tuesday, but then you canceled the meeting, and I can't wear it.
Twice a week in Oklahoma.
At elementary school, I did wear the same shirt. Nobody knew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank our administration of teaching and learning that would jump on this. So are we going to be ahead of the omnibus ask if, uh, for having computer science offering in our high school? Or are they asking for more? The legislative bill that's out there, it's computer science, it's civics, it, I don't know if it's all together, or is it?
The current, the current part of the omnibus bill that includes computer science education is to establish a working group that will set a state plan for what we want CS ed to look like. But it does mandate that we can create CS licensure, um, and that the working group examine things like, what's the requirement at K eight, do all high schools have to offer computer science class and those sorts of things.
So it's not asking us to offer it already next year or something?
No, it's to put a plan in place and then to implement policy after the plan, and it does include funding.
What does that mean?
It includes some funding, if anybody wants to advocate for additional funding, please reach out to me. We asked for four million dollars and it's only half a million in the budget, so.
We can consider it for next.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we're there, I'm there in a couple of.
I can email Assistant Superintendent Bonds the link to the paper that was the bill explainer and everything if you all want to take a look at it at some point or for next year, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's an elective right now in both high schools?
Yes.
And?
And the camps are just supporting because obviously this is, this is twenty-first century, this is, we should be in, um, getting our kids engaged in, and have an experience with around them.
Okay.
Have we ended? Oh, I'm, I'm waiting, I thought, oh, we are. You're done? We are done, thank.